I think he's a typical guy that did.
I used to.
It is Tuesday, four December twenty eighteen at seven P. M. and I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting for the Village of North Hudson to order. Roll call, please. Oop, wait a minute. Invocation, please. I'm getting right through. I'm just ramming through today. Father, the worries of each day are everywhere around us. Conflict both within and without threaten the peace we so desperately want and seek. Father, we come to you with open heart, seeking your guidance and being content with all that you have given us as a nation. Guard our hearts, oh Lord, so that we will be faithful to you and let the peace of the season and of your presence surround us each and every day. Roll call now.
Trustees Leaf?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustees Zeiss?
Here.
Zappa?
Here.
Thank you. Item two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting from October thirtieth.
Stan, can I make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting October thirty twenty eighteen?
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any corrections, amendments, or comments on the, um, the minutes? Crickets, I hear nothing. All in favor of the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Thank you. All right, comments from the floor? I don't see any residents, but it would be, would have been an opportunity to, uh, for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. So, next item is, uh, proposed budget and like to open the public hearing. Do you want, we need to vote on that? Item two is Melissa will present the proposed budget for the budget.
So these are the major items included with the two thousand nineteen annual budget. After a series of budget meetings held by the Finance Committee and staff members, the recommended two thousand nineteen village budget is as presented. The proposed levy is at one million six hundred two thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is an increase to the village property tax levy of seven thousand six hundred and six dollars. This increase includes net new construction of point four oh percent, or fifty-four hundred dollars, an additional principal and interest on loan payments of seven thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. These total thirteen thousand one hundred and nine dollars. However, then we needed to take off our personal property aid payment in the amount of five thousand five hundred and three dollars, which is where that final number of the seven thousand six hundred and six is, comes from. The village mill rate will remain at four point six per one thousand of assessed value and an overall mill rate of eighteen point seven eight, which includes all taxing jurisdictions. It is anticipated that the unassigned fund balance will be seven hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars at the end of two thousand and eighteen, which is within twenty-five percent of expenditures' Shared revenue remains consistent with two thousand eighteen and state transportation aid increased slightly. There is a twenty-three point two percent decrease in health insurance premiums for employees. A three percent wage increase for represented and nonrepresented employees was included. The seventeen dollar capita rate for the EMS contract will remain, and there was a slight increase to the fire contract. Seventy-seven thousand dollars was included in the use of available funds for the purchase of a new police department squad and public works truck. Sixty-five thousand dollars of this amount will come from the police department and public works assigned vehicle fund. This slide shows the comparison between taxes paid in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, including all taxing jurisdictions, which is the county, the village, the Hudson School District, and WITC. The overall mill rate for two thousand nineteen is twenty point seven four minus the school levy tax credit gives the final overall mill rate of eighteen point seven eight per one thousand of assessed value. This final slide shows the allocation of property taxes and the percentage of taxes paid that goes to each taxing jurisdiction. You can see that the largest amount goes to the Hudson School District at fifty-seven percent, followed by the village at twenty-two percent, the county at nineteen percent, and finally WITC at two percent. Does anybody have any questions?
Wow. I thought there was an excellent presentation, Melissa.
Thank you.
And I'd give kudos to, uh, you and to Nathan and to Chief and to Patrick and all the department heads that, uh, and the, uh, in the Finance Committee, they, uh, you know, that's budgeting is never an easy thing with, uh, with municipal budgets, and, uh, this year, uh, we've had some good things happen that, again, through the, uh, the staff is doing an excellent job, and I just want to make sure that everyone is aware and that you did a great job, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments. Um, no, you ain't got anything, Mike. Okay, uh, and so, okay, so we will deem the public hearing closed at seven oh seven. Okay, and then item five, resolution number twenty eighteen dash oh six, adopting the twenty nineteen annual village budget and establishing the tax levy approval requested. Is there a motion?
Stan, can I make a motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty eighteen dash zero six, resolution adopting the twenty nineteen annual budget and establishing the property tax levy for the Village of North Hudson?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Uh, is there any comments or questions? Wasn't any after, during the open meeting, so, uh, and this is definitely our budget item, so Kathy?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, um, resolution twenty eighteen dash zero seven, approving an all-hazards mitigation plan. Approval requested.
Stan, can I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero seven, resolution approving an all-hazard mitigation plan for the Village of North Hudson?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there, uh, comments or questions? This, we have to do this one every so many years. Is that correct?
Uh, this plan goes through twenty twenty-three, and we do need to adopt the plan in order to be eligible for FEMA grant dollars in case we had a emergency.
So if we have a storm or something and, and we didn't have this in, FEMA would not give us any money, and they did, they've been fairly decent and it didn't kick it in after our storm, so. So, any other questions or comments on, uh, the mitigation plan? Hearing none. All in favor of the, uh, resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item seven, twenty nineteen mobile home park license. Pamela Zappa, approval requested. Is there a motion?
Stan, can I move to approve the twenty nineteen mobile home trailer park permit for Pamela Zappa?
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any comments or questions? Annual fees, there's never, we don't have any trouble with that area or anything like that, uh?
Not that I've received notice. I did ask the building inspector to go there and at least review the area, but I haven't heard anything back from that.
Um, any other comments or questions? All in favor of, uh, approving the, uh, mobile home park license for Pamela Zappa, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, that's Dan Stan.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, number eight. This, uh, I didn't know how to put this in here, but it's the, uh, FCC, it's written as FCC public comment on cable fees, uh, discussion and possible recommendation, and since I brought this item up, but I was, uh, I will make the motion to, uh, send a letter to the FCC powers that be to rec, uh, to recommend that they do not allow the cable companies to start charging, uh, the, uh, local municipalities. So what would happen if this would go through, I'll probably have a second, so give me a second on that.
Second.
Then I could discuss. All right, thank you, Kathy. But, uh, if they allow that to go through, they, right now, the cable companies have to give us access to certain, a couple cha, you know, a channel or two, and, uh, if we have to start paying for that, that's, takes away the revenue side of the cable, so, uh, they figure that we could last a couple, couple, three years maybe, but you'd lose your school, um, you know, programming and stuff like that for your sporting events. You lose the meetings and stuff, not that these are anyways watching these, but I mean, uh, but there's a lot of things that we could lose, uh, if we have to start paying for the cable fees. So, alls we're asking with this is that, uh, is the board approves me signing the letters to send to the people in Washington and our local representatives and stuff like that to try to stop. It's been going on for fifty years. It's been working this way, and now all of a sudden, uh, you know, like Comcast and them want to, they're tired of paying for it, I guess, so. Um, so, any other questions about that? There is some more information there, and for the public, if you would like, uh, to learn a little bit more, Melissa, you could put that on the webpage perhaps?
Yes.
Because the more people that write in and say, hey, I mean, this is, you know, we want to keep our, our local stations, especially with our market, you know, we get everything out of the Twin Cities. So, I mean, you know, our local ca, local cable station is the only thing that we get, a lot of our, uh, your local news from, especially, you know, local in the city, so, uh, that would all go away if, if we lose those. And our two channels are low numbers too, and apparently the lower number you have, the more valuable it is to the cable companies, and there is no set fee that they would charge. So they could charge you, oh, you got number four, or, you know, whatever it is, you know, and they could, you know, they can just, you know, what they would charge for that. So, that being said, and I don't want to be any more long-winded, so.
One comment.
What's that? Comment?
They have, you have till December fourteenth, so if you're, if you see this, you have till December fourteenth to make this comment happen.
Thank you.
So, so after December fourteenth, then they can set a fee, you're stating, or what?
We have till December fourteenth.
That's the end of the public comment section.
Public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is this done annually like this, or just basically this is something that's?
This is the first time ever it's popped up, and I know, uh, Judy Kelly, who was the president of the board, said, please, can, you know, she, she wanted to know if we could get on the agenda, and I says, we'll get it on the agenda because it is important that the people know what's going on in town.
You're basically trying, trying to reinterpret the law.
Yeah.
So it's not agreement that we got set with them, it's basically now they have the opportunity maybe change that agreement if they want to start setting fees on it?
Right, that's, yeah, it's.
I went out and read the, you know, the, the peg and all that.
Right.
Government activities and that stuff. It's usually set by, you know, within a municipal, you know, the group and franchise and everything, but I couldn't see anything about them charging. That's why I wasn't sure, so.
Oh, no, they're, uh.
But I mean.
Apparently they can charge whatever, that FCC letter that, you get to the second letter that's on there and stuff.
All right.
And, uh, yeah, and there's more information, uh, there's some links in that letter. But, uh, so, all in favor of, uh, having me send a letter to those folks, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item number nine is new business, uh, and the only thing that I would like to say, it is December, and I'd like to wish everyone, uh, happy Hanukkah if they're celebrating that this week, uh, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year to everyone. I hope you have a safe and wonderful, uh, holiday season. Melissa?
So the spring election will be held on Tuesday, April second, two thousand nineteen. Individuals interested in being on the ballot for the two thousand nineteen spring election can pick up the necessary paperwork at the village hall. The deadline to file all paperwork is five o'clock P. M. on Wednesday, January second, two thousand nineteen. The village president position, as well as three village trustee positions, will be on the ballot. Incumbents are Stan Wecken, Kathy Leaf, Kirk Nelson, and Mark Zappa. And then second is the finance and village board meetings. Uh, the one for January falls on New Year's Day, so we need to reschedule that date, and I was looking at the following Tuesday, which would be January eighth.
Let me look at my new calendar.
We can't move it earlier because that falls on Christmas.
Looks like Tuesday, January eighth is open.
Are we good with that?
Okay, uh, everybody, uh, check calendar. Does it sound good different? Okay, we'll move the date to, uh, eight. That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, Plan Commission, Matt and Mike is here, so if you'd step up to your podium, sir?
Hello. The Plan Commission had their November meeting last Tuesday because of Thanksgiving. Um, last time I was here, we had met in May, and I presented some proposed zoning changes and things for your June meeting, and one particular one, read the, read the thing, uh, ordinance, or, chapter ninety-eight zoning, section ninety-eight, thirty-three D, general commercial district C three, uh, the Plan Commission had considered allowing, uh, a permanent use as mini storage units there. Uh, the board tabled it at that time, thought it was a little overly broad, and so the purpose of our meeting last week was the, uh, the people who, who brought up the first thing, the Gerard Development Company, had a concept plan they'd like us to look at for adding mini storage units to where the existing mini storage units are in that C three section, near the new apartments they're putting in. And so, it was a discussion. They were interested to see if we were even interested in a general concept. Uh, we had some back and forth. We talked for about forty-five minutes. Uh, Paul was there, and so clarified what we were all doing, and, uh, to get feedback. And so, we had some recommendations. We didn't have a formal proposal, but, and, and you may see it on our minutes, uh, we proposed, you know, just the proper kind of lighting, landscaping to help the area keep the noise and everything down from the neighbors, uh, adding the security, and they talked about fencing and lock gates and things, and how they'd be working with the police department and shared, uh, TVs, glow circuit TV, things like that. Um, they're talking about where it's all gravel now to, to put in asphalt to make it easier to follow the snow and things. And, um, one other thing is, right now, it, uh, the existing mini storage units, whether grandfather and whatever, they don't meet all the setbacks, and so one thing we told them to look at is see if you could make your new ones come in and meet the, the setback limits we have now. And so, it was, it was pretty positive.
There is no recommendation or thing that just, just?
Right, and so, we gave them the feedback so they know that they should proceed with coming up with a little bit more details, so they'd have something to present to us, and, and to make sure that the board was interested in, in, in maybe pursuing that.
Well, it sounds great.
That's where we left it.
And then, in the meantime, I've been in touch with their attorney, and the two of us are going to work on some zoning language that will, I think, satisfy the board's concerns about limiting the area and also, you know, their concerns to allowing to do their expansion, so.
Okay.
We're going to put that together.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike or Paul? Okay, thank you, sir.
That was our only topic. Thank you.
All right, number eleven. Personnel and Finance Committee recommendations, uh, claims and approval requested.
Stan, can I move to rec, move to approve the December twenty eighteen non-recurring claims of one hundred and three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents?
Thank you, Brian. Kathy, a second? Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions, or about the monthlies? Hearing none. Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Authorization for village administrator to transfer funds from the unassigned fund to the two oh one fund approval requested.
Stan, can I make a motion to authorize the village administrator to move seventy-five thousand from the general fund to the two oh one fund as an interest-free inter-fund loan, which will be repaid from the two oh one fund to the general fund as funds become available?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, questions on this? Or, Melissa, you want, just, uh, for the rest of the board, did a little fill-in of what we can do?
Yes, instead of, um, taking directly from the unassigned fund and putting it into the two oh one fund, um, we're going to do this inter-fund transfer basically between the two, so it won't affect the unassigned fund balance, and then as funds are available in the two oh one, we'll gradually repay back the general fund. So it's kind of a loan between the funds rather than just taking the money outright from the unassigned.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? And that's, uh, kind of a loan and money thing, so Kathy?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. Item C, twenty nineteen contracts, discussion and approval requested. The first one is animal impounding services with the Woodbury Animal Humane Society.
Stan, could I move to approve the annual, the animal impounding services contract for twenty nineteen?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? We had, uh, discussion during finance where, uh, the, uh, there was slight in, uh, increases in, uh, uh, the fees that they charge over there, and, uh, you'll explain it better than I will, I'm pretty sure.
So the Animal Humane Society used to collect a reclaim fee from the owner on the village's behalf of seventy-five dollars, and then quarterly they would send that fee back to the village. They will no longer collect that fee, um, for any municipalities. So we had discussed, um, us as a village billing the, the owner directly for actual costs incurred by the village for them, from the animal warden and the Animal Humane Society.
Thank you. Any questions about that?
Like, wait, what does that cost a year? I mean, is there a lot of animals running around here we're catching?
About fifty a year.
Yeah.
Really? Is there? I don't know, I'm asking. Yeah, no, there's, uh, between the cats and then now, I'm seeing a lot more on Facebook or, you know, some of the social media things, that there's always a cat or dog running loose in town, it seems like, you know, but, uh, and the other thing is, it's, you know, for the pet owners, I mean, if they, if they don't let their pet out, there'll be no fee. You know, I mean, if they, if they can keep track of them and stuff, so, uh.
And the fees from Kathy can range from fifty-some dollars up to easily over a hundred, depending if it's after hours, holiday, things like that. So, missing that seventy-five dollars per reclaimed pet hurts a little bit, so this is a way of recouping some of those costs.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions? So, uh, motion to accept the services, is that?
Yeah, we already did that.
Okay, so, uh, let's have, uh, a vote. Uh, Tim?
Yes.
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 Okay, B, twenty nineteen animal warden service contract with Kathy Pelner.
Stan, can I make a motion to approve the twenty nineteen animal warden services contract with Kathy Pelner?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Comments or questions? I think everything stayed the same with her.
It did.
This year, there's no increases.
Yes, pretty much.
Yeah, there's not much choice. Uh, okay, and contract Kathy?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. And building inspector zoning administrator contract. Brian Wirt, is there a motion?
Stan, can I make a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement between the building inspector and zoning administrator and the Village of North Hudson?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any discussions or comments? Hearing none. Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item twelve, Public Works Committee Recommendations. Chair update. Brian?
Uh, Public Works did meet. The salchette is complete, and we're pretty excited and happy about that. Um, also want the, the village people to remember that we plow at three inches of, of snow. Hudson plows at two, we plow at three inches. We have some questions about the order in which we do our plowing of the streets, and I've asked our director to, uh, get with our administrator and put a link up, because we actually have a diagram of how we plow the streets, so you can go up there and look at a link sometime and see exactly, not exactly when you're going to get plowed, but basically what our schedule looks like, the order in which we do our streets. Um, also, a reminder on, on the snow, that, uh, you're supposed to get your cars off the street so we can plow, and, uh, shoveling around your mailbox is your responsibility so that you can get your mail, and the hydrants that are out there is also your responsibility as village people. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and all, the, the three, just for clarification, on the three-inch or two-inch plow, that's if the, the event occurs overnight. I mean, we're going to plow two inches of snow and during the daytime when it's snowing, but, uh, but they, unless of course, you know, the, the chief needs, you know, if it's really slippery or whatever, and they need him to come out earlier, then they would come out for the salt trucks and stuff, but, yeah, it's three inches after hours, you know. Okay, uh, item thirteen, public safety. Mark, is there an update?
We did meet, and we have a couple action items, and the chief will walk us through those.
All right, so we have two action items. Uh, the first one does not, Melissa and I had a conversation about the, uh, no parking signage on the six hundred block of St. Croix Street North. Um, when we looked at the ordinance a little bit closer, it does not need board approval, but we did bring it before the public safety committee, uh, just to talk it through, to make sure that we were, making sure that we're making adjustments based on a real need. Um, there were some concerns over here on St. Croix Street between Sixth and Seventh Street of cars that were parking fairly close to the corner, and then when, when vehicles on Sixth Street were trying to turn, and if there was another car coming the other way, there was some problems that we were noticing and we were hearing about from a couple of different residents. So, um, the public safety committee did recommend, and I'll work with, uh, Patrick, to put up some signage to do a no parking, um, basically from the driveway, uh, that's just east on the south side of St. Croix Street, all the way back to Sixth Street North, and so that it will keep that area open and allow for better flow and hopefully avoid any accidents. We haven't had any accidents that I can recall, uh, but from talking to residents, there's been a lot of close calls. So, we'll make that recommendation to, uh, the Streets Commissioner, which is Patrick's, uh, another title that he carries, and we'll work with him on that. The second item, um, do you want to have the motion first and then the conversation?
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Uh, motion to, uh, uh, have no site, no parking signage on the six hundred block of St. Croix Street, is that what we're talking about?
No, item C.
What?
The next item, C.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to remove the language under section ninety-nine paren C, paren three of ordinance ninety-nine.
And I'll second that.
Tim, thank you.
Sorry about that. So, um, I have provided an issue statement on this one. Um, there was some work a couple of years ago, um, I think I may have put it in there. I want to say two thousand sixteen, the village board approved ordinance ninety-dash twelve, which was parking and use of recreational vehicles. It talked a lot about, uh, where you can store a, a recreational vehicle, a trailer, camper, those types of things, and I think it, it came forward because of, uh, some concerns that a resident had called asking some questions, and we didn't really have anything in place. Um, we had a call for service from the village, from a resident who had some concerns about a neighbor who had a camper that was parked on their property, and someone was staying in it. Um, when we had called and talked to the property owner, they said, well, yeah, but there's that ordinance that allows for two weeks at a time, and what if they leave for three days and then come back? Does that two weeks re-up? And there was some con, conflict between ninety-nine paren C three and that ninety-dash twelve, which was put into place in two thousand sixteen. So, um, in looking at with the public safety committee and with the village attorney, um, really, the one way that we can make an easy adjustment to this is to remove the language in ninety-nine paren C three, which allows for that two-week timeframe, and, um, which is somewhat covered under ninety-dash twelve, which is.
which allows 30 days over a calendar year of time where someone could sleep in a camper, not reside in one, but sleep overnight, you know, whether it's kids or someone that you have that you just wanted to put up for a quick evening. Can't cook in those places, can't, you know, hook them up to septic or sewer and electric and those kind of things. But basically, just those 30 days covered under that subsection. So this is a quick and easy fix to make sure that we have one timeframe, which we can then help describe to our residents when they call in about a neighbor, and we can point them to that ordinance.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of 90-9? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Stan, may I make one last comment?
Absolutely.
It's a comment that follows up a little bit with the Public Works and snow removal. One of the other things that we see a lot for our residents is that they are removing their snow from their property and placing it onto the street or onto somebody else's property. That is illegal by village ordinance. So we would just remind people not to snow blow your driveway into this roadway. Whether it's been snowed or not, that's still a violation of our ordinance. And I know that it causes quite a bit of, quite a bit of problems, both with the surface of the road. We also have some people that are kind of more in a rural area that plow their driveways across the roadway and onto somebody else's property. We ask, based on ordinance, that they not do that and just kind of make sure that they deposit it back on their own property. And I'm sure Patrick would be appreciative of that as well as the public safety or the public works supervisor, hat that he wears.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Watch your step over there, Gordon. So I would've forgot it. Okay, next is Public Welfare.
We did not meet, Stan.
Okay, how about Park Board?
We did meet, but nothing to bring up to the board.
Okay. And the next item then is convene into closed session. Board will convene in closed session per 19... Dash, or point 85, paren 1, paren E, for the purpose of delivering and negotiating, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require, and per 1985, paren 1, paren G, to confer with legal counsel requiring strategy. The governing body may adopt in litigation with the village that is likely to come involved with regarding EMS service contract.
This one you do need a motion for.
Okay, do I need a motion? Or somebody want to make a motion to go into closed? Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. We are now in closed session, so...
Got a vote on it.
What's that? Vote. Kathy?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Happy holidays.